I'd like to call this meeting on the Alternative Ed Subcommittee to order. Can you please call the roll?
Ms. Dragun?
Here.
Mr. Coogan?
Yeah.
Mr. Costa?
Yeah. Please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic where it stands, obligation under law, community physical, with liberty, and justice for all. First, until the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. So the first item on the agenda is the RPA redesign. I'll turn it over to the superintendent and whoever he'd like to speak.
So, tonight, we're going to be here to present and answer questions of the committee around the work that we've been doing at RPA. The work, as you know, two years ago, we applied for a Barr Foundation redesign grant. We were denied at that time. We reapplied again, and were accepted. Now, for the past year, we've got a team at RPA working with Barr's cohort of New England redesigned schools in partnership with Spring Point, which is the national kind of organizer of the redesign work, and our thought partner, School in Maine, who are here today. School in Maine is really helping provide the technical assistance in our work and our thinking about what doing high school differently will mean. You know, alternative education is something that is really in vogue nationally and internationally as we really think differently about how to engage kids that don't fit in the more comprehensive model of structure, overage, underaccredited students, and how do we get them to the end zone in a competency-based model where they're able to be successful in work or career, or career or college and family. So those are the things that we'll be here to talk to you tonight. What we're not here to do is take any action on where we're going. The good news is, we've been invited to apply for a second year of planning, and our plan is to proceed with a second year of planning and then come back to the subcommittee next winter to discuss where we see ourselves going the following year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rob Janet and the rest of the team. I'm joined here by Ann Dagan as well, who can also answer questions. And I'm glad we got this first, so Spring Point and Spring Point, so School in Maine, Andy can answer the questions that you guys have, and then we can cut them loose too.
Carr?
Yes. Well, we've been working on that redesign plan, and we're still going through that first phase of planning, and we're coming to the end of our first year of the planning. Right now, we're looking at creating a new vision for the school, a new mission statement, you know, where we want our school to be and what we want our school to be like for our students. We were looking at all the different models that we were allowed to look at through our school visitations, and we've gone through quite a few schools through Denver. We saw schools that were using the competency-based model, okay? Positive youth development is the center core of their school. And by using the positive youth development process, they were able to have students achieve at the rate where they felt comfortable at, and, again, everything was student-centered. We saw that throughout, that was a common theme through all the schools that we visited throughout Denver, New York, and San Diego. We are trying to take that information now, along with our partners, School for the Futures and Spring Point, and try to develop something that mimics that, that would meet the needs of our students that we currently don't meet right now.
Jan? Would you like to add anything?
Really? Do you have any questions?
So we got a two-page document, just for the public certification, that's titled "A Strategy for Implementing Multiple Pathways to Graduation." So I don't know if anybody else wants to comment more on this, or just opening up the questions. Do you have any other?
Well, I mean, I can definitely comment on it. I know Jan can speak to it, but really what the plan is, is we're thinking about the future, is that RPA as a shell represents one model of alternative education. And what we're going to be, what we have been studying and what we are proposing, is that within the shell of alternative education, that we actually have two options. We have RPA, which would serve students seven through 12, or hopefully six through 12, as we think about the future, because right now, I don't have any sixth-grade options at the middle level. And then, the new school, or the new pathway, serving kids at the high school level. So what you traditionally think about as grades, nine through 12, but let's do away with grades for a second. Those kids that are 15 to whatever age, the kids that are currently at RPA would pick this new option of pathway, this new school option that they're designing right now, and essentially would apply, go through a process of making commitments to understand what the whole new design is. And those kids would then be educated in this new model, and those kids who do not want that would stay in what we currently call RPA, which, again, would be basically sixth grade through 12th grade. If there are kids that are unsuccessful in this new model, no matter how the efforts that we have, they could go back to RPA. There are some kids, and you know the work that we've been doing at RPA over the last three years, is totally different than what RPA used to be. There are essentially four ways to get to RPA. Some kids, we send there. Some kids, we counsel there. Some kids, we reengage off the streets, drop-out reengagement and other methodologies. And then the fourth way are some kids who just pick that they want to go there because Durfee or another option wasn't working for them. So we have essentially four different pathways to get us to RPA. RPA has been successful in meeting the needs of roughly, on paper, about 200 kids. Last year, we had the largest graduating class we've ever had. But we've been doing RPA at a very traditional model, trying to essentially be a mini-Durfee. What this new model is proposing is a much more engaged, active competency-based model, where through project-based learning, internships, interdisciplinary instruction, a portion of online instruction, but also capstone projects and community engagement, for lack of a better term, students will develop a set of mastery skills that they'll be able to demonstrate, and that is how they will proceed through and graduate upon completion of a certain set of mastery skills which they're currently identifying. The teachers in this new model will be selected from those that we currently have, plus hopefully opening up for some other options across the system for folks to look at. You know, alternative thinkers aren't the norm, but if there are some folks that would really want to be part of something new, that they could apply. We're looking at the overhead, the total cost of this model, we believe will be cost-neutral, given the total number of students. We're going to have one building principal leading the building, and within that, the administrative structure between the two schools, I think, based on pretty much what we have in place right now, we'll be able to do with the current economy of scale. If the program grows, of course, we'd have to add more capacity, but we think that we'll be able to do it in the model that we have. The vision is, is that once we move out all of the back-office functionary aspects of our operations into the Negro Auditorium area, that the RPA building will then have three floors, well, essentially four floors, available for activity. And we would divide those up so that separate entrances, a way we could do that, so that RPA is one school and this new school is another. I want to be real clear about something. When folks say, "Oh, we can't have two schools in one building," you know, there's places in New York that have nine schools in one building. I was a principal in Boston, we had three schools in one building. This is not impossible, and it works really well in all the places that I've seen. So I think that the space is ideal to be able to co-locate. I envision, if you could think about this, I know I've explained this, and sometimes people get confused, but let's just use the figure that we have 150 ninth-through-12th graders in the current RPA building. Of those 150, let's say 100 of them want to be part of this new model. They go. The other 50 stay in the traditional RPA, which is, would be, again, like a sixth-through-12th model, they stay. These 100 kids now are doing totally different learning. It's, again, interdisciplinary, capstone-based, you progress based on your ability to meet certain competency determinations, which they're designing right now as we speak. Those kids get to graduation, they graduate. The RPA kids get to a credit-based model, complete a bunch of stuff, pass the MCAS, they graduate. This model would have to pass the MCAS as well, but the way that the engagement and the teaching and the advisory, much more interdisciplinary, much more forward-thinking. I think, and if you would, you know, when I speak to kids at the current RPA, they seem very happy there, the majority. I know some go back to Durfee, but the majority of students stay. What we're looking to do is create another learning experience for those kids who are overage, underaccredited, that we feel we can meet the kids' needs that are currently in RPA, that just want to get by and graduate with the credit-based model. And then this new model, kids that really want this opportunity to do much more deeper inquiry, deeper learning, more engagement, more community-based stuff, and graduate, really with a model that's going to prepare them for college and career in a way that's much more holistic. So our design plan right now is that we have one RPA. Next year, as we continue our design, we're going to be piloting a lot of the stuff with a very small number of students that we've learned this past year, and then we would come back to the committee next year for more information, and then hopefully a vote to approve us to be able to have two state numbers, and then the following year, implement the new model for BOR, or grade at a time, whatever we decide at that moment. But we envision, long-term, that this new model could serve anywhere from 100 to whatever students, and RPA could continue to serve up to about 100 students or more, given the online component. But this, I think, gives us another tool in our toolbox to be able to meet the needs of kids. Now, remember, we no longer have Gateway. There are Community Connections, and another, there's Youth Bill, although that's not a diploma-based program. This would be a diploma-based program in partnership with everything that you've read in the grant application, with People Incorporated, our friends at Schools for Future School in Maine, the support of the Barr Foundation, it's a three-year grant. If we get the big grant, it's a lot of money over three years. Next year, again, is just a planning component, but we feel strongly that really will be a tip of the spear in this kind of work that's happening in Massachusetts. I'll let them share some of the stuff that they've learned in other places, but also with the other colleagues that Barr has in this cohort of folks in New England and Massachusetts that are doing this work.
So I just wanted to clarify. So one of my questions, and I think you partially answered it. What is the plan for September's 19-20 school year? And what do we need to?
September 19th, so the following September?
Right now. So?
Oh, this September.
So, at first, you said that this is a planning grant for next year.
Yes.
So I was thinking in my head, so that means not this coming school year, the following school year is when we implement something. But then you actually, Jan said there was going to be some sort of?
We're piloting some of the stuff that we're learning. We're trying to do more. What does competency-based education actually look like on the ground? So if the competency is, you must be able to solve a multi-step math problem that also has some sort of economic component and some sort of social aspect, what does that look like? How do we teach students how to do that? And then how do we have a product that we look as an exemplar for them to demonstrate they've actually done that? If we can model some of that stuff this coming year, that's what we're going to be piloting.
That's what you mean by a pilot?
Yeah.
Not necessarily?
We're not moving to two schools this year.
Technically speaking, Mr. Carr is the principal. Whatever the administrative structure is, it's going to be the same for the next year.
It will be the same for the next year. I've publicly said that I want Janet to be the leader of this new design model when we open the new school. I've tasked her, and that's what part of the grant of the planning offsets the cost of her time, to be able to do that, lead work. A year from now, when we come back to the committee and we talk about FY '21 and what our needs are there, I don't see us adding, we're not going to have two administrative staffs for plates that only serves 200 kids. We'll have one team, and at that time, I'll make decisions in terms of what that team actually looks like and who's on it, but in terms of the numbers of people, they're about the same.
But the next year's not going to change until the following year.
Right.
So I have some other questions, but I'm going to open up to my colleagues, and we'll kind of just go like that. Mr. Coogan?
Yeah, I, I'm not a fan of this. Why aren't we doing this now?
Why aren't we doing what?
Competency-based education and all the things you're talking about. Why can't we do that now?
We don't have the horses or the training yet.
So when did you talk about the horses coming?
The horses are coming now through the training that's going to give us a second year of doing. And then we're going to, the teachers that are going to be teaching in, that's who we have to identify. That will take us about a year. There's a training backup that will probably be involved in professional development through the whole winter and spring of next year, and through the summer, leading to the opening of that. So remember, this isn't about, this is a whole new way of thinking about engagement using standards, but with a different instructional design.
You're not answering my question. Why can't we do that now?
We don't know how to yet.
Okay, so when we know how to do it, why can't we do it then?
We're gonna.
Without another school and a different SASED number and restrictions on kids, which I'm not going to vote for.
What restrictions on kids?
Well, you're going to take 100 kids now that are in RPA and move them to a different school, and you're going to cap the number at the other school at 100.
We're not going to cap. We're only serving 200 now.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So why are we moving kids? With 200, you should have the flexibility and a staff of, like, there's like 40 people down there.
We do.
But I'm saying, you can do, everything you just said, you can do right now if you've developed a model to work within that building.
Ah, no, the only thing that we won't be able to do is kids will have no choice. Because they all get sent there.
I read this, you think you're going to be getting kids to leave the charter schools and come there, and the Catholic schools and come there.
There will be some, Mr. Coogan. We'll get those now. But these are the kids, I want you to imagine.
Hold it, stop, 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 stop. They leave the Catholic schools and go to RPA now?
How many kids we've had come in from?
No, no, how many have left Catholic schools, staying currently and come to RPA now?
Or, it could be a Catholic school in a different city, Mr. Coogan.
Whatever, give me the school.
Uh, Ricardo Stolman in Brockton.
Give me the school that's left.
Left a charter school?
No, left a Catholic schools that have come to RPA. You said, "I want to enroll at RPA."
We've had one from the charter school.
Well, that's not a Catholic school. I understand there might be a charter school kid, but it's my position that everything you just talked about, we could do right now in the present, although it's not.
Except for choice, Mr. Coogan. This is a school of choice.
I'm going to finish my statement without you interrupting me, please. It's my position that with the staff you have down there, you can build any kind of a model you want. We've always supported RPA to have that kind of flexibility, whether it's with the old principal bringing the culinary program in, the link with People Incorporated, whatever that school needs to do to get those kids successful, I support. I don't know if I support a school of choice where the model you're talking about is going to recruit out of the Catholic schools and the charter schools, and you think they're going to come down there and say, you know, "You guys just spent $260 million on a brand-new Durfee. Can I please walk by that to go to the RPA?" I don't think it's going to happen, and I know from my heart of dealing with kids that that's not going to happen. It's my position that that's an alternative school. Whatever program you're describing, I support within the framework we have there now. These people can be coached up, they can get professional development. If you don't have the right staff and you've got to make moves, that's your call, that's not my call. But the people there can, everything I've read here, none of it's out of the realm of believability. I have no idea why you have to go through all these machinations to flip the school on its ear to do this.
I don't understand how we're flipping a school on its ear, Mr. Coogan.
Well, you're going to have a separate floor, and you're going to have?
We have that now. We've got a middle school and one floor.
But that's what I'm saying. You're already, the things you're talking about, you're already doing.
But next year, when you see some of this stuff, then you can make these comments, because we're going to have a year.
No, I'm going to make them on what you look.
I know. Mr. Coogan, we're going to have a year for you to be able to see some of the things that we're looking at, learn more about the process. Hell, we can even send you on some of these tours next year, if you'd like to see other schools that are doing this work in other places, because this is the work of what alternative ed looks like. Kids that don't have any buy-in, don't buy in. We send kids to RPA, and we're going to continue to do that, but once they're there, these kids will then have a choice. Do I want to be part of the new school, or do I want to be part of RPA? If they choose to buy in to this new school, what research shows is that they're going to have a vested interest in doing well and meeting our expectations, which include a whole bunch of stuff that you don't actually, haven't talked about yet, like internships, summer explorations, a whole host of other kind of community engagement programs. We require those as part of this capstone stuff. So there's a whole bunch of stuff that you would have to invest in and want to do. Other kids that want to just time, pass a test, complete the credit, and graduate can do that. This is a different model.
But what you're saying, you could be doing right now.
No.
You could. You're saying no, but if that was what you had to do, you'd be doing it.
So already, in three years, RPA has moved based on this work. We've done a lot of work, and we've improved a lot of the stuff we do. So we are doing some of what these guys have been learning, but what we haven't done is, the kids that are currently in RPA haven't been able to select to try to do a whole new model, and the teachers that are there would be essentially applying to come over to agree. Could be a different schedule, could be different times.
I know, but you're?
It could be extended year.
Matt, you keep telling me these things. Tell me why you can't do that right now. You can't say, "Kevin, you're teaching English IX for the RPA kids, and Paul, you're teaching English IX for the competency-based kids."
Because it's not going to be English IX.
But I'm just, I'm giving you an example. Don't hang up on nine. Why can't he teach a course and I teach a different course?
Why can't you?
That's what I'm saying.
So if I can just try to clarify, we've talked about this a little. I think Mr. Coogan's raising valid points. I have many of the same concerns as we talked about in the prior subcommittees, but from what my knowledge is of competency-based education, RPA is currently doing some of that via ingenuity. So we got a third-year eighth grader that's smart as a whip, but for whatever reasons in life, he didn't get to do what he has to do. From what I understand, they'll take the computer, they'll go on the course, look at the competency, as I can pass all of these tests. They earn those credits, so technically speaking, those credits have moved up already. So we're doing?
That's a credit-based model.
But it's?
It's not a competency-based model.
But it's competency-based in the fact of?
They haven't proven to you that they can do anything.
Other than pass a test.
Other than pass a test.
So if that's the case?
There's no demonstration of mastery.
So if that's the case, I would say that we should review the policy of what's happening at RPA right now, and we should not be given the credits if what you just said is accurate. Those kids under a scenario like that, that say, student A can pass geometry, you know, algebra II, whatever, they've passed the test, they've gone on ingenuity. If you're saying that just that is not showing mastery, then that's telling me that they're doing something that they shouldn't be doing right now.
Any school in the country's not doing that. With Matt, competency-based education is a whole new future.
I'm not looking at the terminology.
All right. So what are you saying? They've met the requirement.
So if I ask, so if I ask Mr. Carr, if you have a student that comes in who's 18 years old, and they've been in school for four years, taking all kinds of math classes, but they can never piece it all together, what happens to that student when they come to your school? Do they have to take each course for the entire time, or is there other ways to get that student credited, ramped up, whatever you want to call it?
There are other pathways.
Such as?
There are other pathways. They could use ingenuity as a pathway.
What does that mean?
They would be signed up in an online course, and they have to meet the requirements of the course by passing the test.
And then what happens?
And if they pass the final of that course through that test successfully, they're awarded the credit.
Algebra I. I'm a student, I come in, Algebra I, I take ingenuity from September to October 15th. And I pass that test. What happens to me?
Students work at their own pace, online?
What happens in October 15th, and I pass Algebra I?
You get a passing grade.
And a credit.
And credits.
And you move to what grade, what class next?
You move on to next?
Algebra II.
Algebra II, plane geometry.
Go through that, from October 15th to November 15th, you show mastery in that, what happens to that student?
They get a passing grade.
And they get credit.
And they?
That's the point I'm trying to make, is where I hear Mr. Coogan saying is, "Why aren't we doing some of those things?" I think you are doing some of those things already at the school. Could we add more and do some of this other stuff? Sure. But I don't want it to seem like as if, I'll speak for myself, that I'm against some of the things that are in here, but it's maybe the way that it's either being packaged, or maybe we're not exactly sure what the future plans are, things like that.
And that's why we've got another year of planning, because we're going to get much more granular and clear in what it looks like for the following year. We're not at that position yet. Mr. Costa?
Thank you. How many schools do we currently have now that you've been able to visit where they have a school of choice and an alternative program in the same building?
We've seen several models that there are multiple alternative schools all in one building, so it's not so much that there's a main alternative, it's just that the district has many first-choice options for students in terms of their high school. The schools in New York, the schools in San Diego, we've seen, there isn't just one main comprehensive high school. Students are able to apply all over the region. Some students are traveling, you know, 25, 30 miles to go to a school of their choice, and it's, kids are very happy because they're going to these schools that offer different learning styles that they feel connected with. So we've seen several.
So what's going to be the stick for this? Why a kid's going to want to bypass the $265 million brand-new high school and go to this new? What's going to be my, what's your draw? What's going to get me to?
A lot of it is culture. So I think the difference?
But I don't know that culture, because I'm coming from Catholic school. So I just left the Catholic school, I thought it was pretty comfortable there. I get the choice to go on a Durfee, sparkling shiny, or I can make the choice to go to your school. How do I know about that culture? Like, what is it that's going to draw me there?
So if you're an RPA student, and we're recruiting students from RPA to say, "Hey, this is an option for you," this school will have more of a school identity different than that of RPA. So if you're sent to RPA, you may have been sent there for a whole gamut of reasons. If you have this option, you may say, "This is a school that I'm going to have a lot of intensive SCL, different advisory, different outside community-based learning experiences, and it's a different setup. You won't have just one classroom sitting in desks in rows, learning Algebra I. You may have a course that is centered on social justice, and it might be tying in different aspects of government, literature. There are interdisciplinary thematic courses.
Tell me, understand that. I won't get that if I go to the high school?
It would be a different course selection.
Right.
And a smaller feel of the school.
I would have an opportunity to pick electives that could give me those same things, correct? If I went to the high school?
Perhaps you could. It's on a different size and scale, which I think, the size of a school really does lend itself to the culture.
The other piece that I heard you say is that it was a cultural thing, and students in RPA could choose to go, and I think that's your feeder. I don't necessarily think?
That's the main feeder of where we would begin.
Right, it has to be, because no one would have a comfort with the school enough to want to opt into the new school, within the school, if you will. I see that as maybe a draw. Students who are at RPA, "Hey, wait a minute, I'm doing well here, I like it here, I'm going to apply to this other school within a school, a competency-based school," as opposed to, you're seeing, envisioning students coming from the charters, from Catholic schools, from across the district.
That's another thing. There may be, but here's what the piece that's missing, may I?
Sure.
We don't have an educational options department, which we should. A system this size, all kids come in, they all get assigned to Durfee. It shouldn't be that way. Kids come in, I see a kid from Georgia that's got X, Y, and Z, I should say, "You know something, I got a design model for you." And we place them through this process, we'll now have options.
But then it's not their choice.
RPA will be their choice. I mean, I'm sorry. This new model would be their choice, because they're going to get assigned to RPA.
But that's not a choice.
I know that.
If I come in from Georgia and you tell me according to you at RPA?
And you're going to RPA, yes.
That's not my choice to be there.
That's right. That's right. That's the way RPA is now. This model would be those kids that are at RPA could either stay where they are at RPA or choose to go into this new one.
So, there's your feeder. That's your feeder. RPA is your feeder.
I think we all agree to that.
So, well, and I don't know you're gonna have enough students consistently opting into the new competency base side of your school there. That's my concern, your, your, your number of students wanting to opt into this new building.
Working with the students right now, they're, we're saying we wanna pilot a very small cohort of competency-based interdisciplinary courses just with a small number of students. And the number of students right now that are expressing interest and have been coming up to me every day, saying, I really wanna do this, when are we gonna find out more information? We wanna do this. It's overwhelming. It's a lot of students.
Those are the ones that are already there. They know the culture, they know the school, they know the staff.
But they want something different.
How quickly are you gonna be able to assimilate these students you're bringing or placing in RPA to wanna make that change? How long is that process? The kids that have been in your school now at RPA who wanna opt into this new portion of the school have been there for a while. And so, so I understand they're excited. It's something new, maybe it's something that sort of grabbed their attention. So, they wanna be a part of it. I get that. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. How many students that you place at RPA, how long is it gonna take those students to realize that they wanna be part of that new school? And are you gonna continuously have enough feeder students to keep your enrollment at a, at a sufficient level, if you will?
I think we'll have more than enough students that are going want this option. And I think what it does is it takes the students that are at RPA and it increases their level of rigor and their motivation because they know that there is this option that can offer them all these external internships and things.
Again, I'm, I'm just feeling my way through this. And I'm not trying to diminish the work that's been put into it or the opportunities that, that may be available for students as it starts to evolve more. I'm just, the, the piece that I'm hung up on is where are these students gonna come from? And are you gonna have enough students, year after year, to sustain this type of program that you're creating now? That's my only piece. I don't buy we're gonna get an influx of students from the charters, the Catholic schools, or other places that wanna say, wait a minute, I'm going, I wanna go there.
Eventually, the RPA seven through twelve would be smaller because those students would just be moving to this new school of choice. So, really, our main vocal group is the RPA students. We're just gonna give them something different.
Right?
It will always be.
So, what you're saying is it's basically RPA will be a transition into this new program.
You can't be an on-track student going to this new school of choice. You have to be off-track.
So, with that said, I think it's, we have to really clear the air and clarify what we get as school committee members of information. And just to put everybody's perspective on what we get, we have this document that was given to us by you guys, you folks. The document reads, additional high school-age students from Fall River drawn to this option could include those currently in charters, Catholic school, private schools, students from other districts, homeschoolers and dropouts currently not attending any high school. Chapter seventy funding following these students. It is our belief that this new competency-based school will grow over time and be built into Dr. Malone's recommended budget to the committee. That statement right there is where this is coming from, these questions.
And what you just read is what we just explained. If we're successful, there will be more kids coming.
I think what the problem is, is that we, I can speak for myself and I think both of my colleagues expressed the same thing. This type of wording in here is making it seem like as if we're doing something to draw kids from other places. When what I hear, and I've said it at the last meeting, and I'll say it again here, RPA's doing a lot of good things and the things you're talking about. I'm not sure why we're having to flip this thing upside down. And I said it last time, fall all over ourselves because we got a grant to try and figure out, well, let's do this, let's do that, let's do this, let's do that. So, in that regard, I agree with my colleague to my left that we should be doing some of these things. And I think you are, quite frankly. My colleague to the right brings up a good point, where are the kids gonna come from? I hear your answer just now is that you have a population of students at RPA. And round numbers, seventy-five percent of those are students that are probably gonna wanna maybe go to this function. And we have another small percentage that are kids that got sent out of the other school because they either don't know how to behave or they got some other issues that are not in this category. So, in my mind, as one member, I'd rather not try and figure out, let's do all these other things for that. I would rather flip it around and say, let's address that small little population first. And say, there's kids that are always gonna be misbehaving and not able to be educated in that setting. Let's try and figure out that piece, whether it's over the next year on a pilot or something, so that we can address that. And you can have four-hundred kids at RPA, do what you gotta do with all of this stuff. And we just take the students that are either a bad element in one way or another, that are creating a bad culture, as people say, because of the types of situations they're in or because of their tremendous behavioral difficulties. Let's take those students and make a separate school for them. And let you guys do RPA like you're doing it right now, plus. To me, I'd rather do that than, because we're going back and forth here to try to figure it out. I think the, the model is more focused on what, what is it gonna be for this new school? Rather than saying, why don't we just redesign the RPA?
But that's what we're doing.
And Mr. Costa asked at the last, the last meeting when I reviewed the minutes, is RPA gonna lose its identity if we do the bar-grant foundation, that thing? The answer was, by Mr. Carrera, I believe, it said something along the lines of, we don't wanna lose our identity. We just have a, a culture, we have a stigma that we wanna try and get rid of in that school. And I can understand that. My personal belief is that as long as we have students in the same building that have done some serious behavioral issues or things that are not necessarily for that, I say, rather than put them on the third floor or fourth floor, let's address that issue so that that whole RPA can be looked at as, call it a new name, call it whatever you want. But let it be a total thing and let's get rid of the population of students that we all know can't make it in a regular...
We're gonna put them.
That's what we've gotta figure out. And I'm saying if we spent a third of their energy, time, money, resources that we've spent trying to do this and hire people and consultants and everybody to go, we're visiting schools, all that stuff, if we spend a third of that time to try and figure out that other piece, we would already have the answer to that.
Well, let me tell you a couple of things. One, we wouldn't be in this grant process. Two, the, what we are trying to do is exactly what you just said, reinvent RPA. RPA, except for the middle school kids, probably in four years, won't even exist. Because every kid that we send there will pick this new model, except for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders because they can't be in this high school model. So, that's really what we're doing. If you could think about investment banks in the eighties, we're going through the mirror and coming out the other side totally different. It's, but it's a process, it's a funnel. What we're trying to do, the money that we've spent, the hours, the effort, has been to fix RPA, to turn it into something that it's not. We still need a place to send kids that get in trouble.
That's my point.
Right? But every kid at RPA, not every, but, you know, seventy-five percent or eighty percent of the two-hundred that are there are all there because they've been in trouble at some point. A small percentage of kids have come because of choice and because of dropout re-engagement. And a couple that agreed to the placement. Most of the others, we've sent there. This model is gonna meet the needs of those kids differently, but we're still gonna need to have a place for other kids. Having them in the same building is just a geographic thing. That's not a problem, that's a cost saving. But this model will look and feel different, whatever the name is, when we get to that point where we get the, you know, come forward to the committee with that stuff. That will be what the new, when we think about changing the culture or the stigma of what that will mean for, for those kids and their families.
Mr. Costa. You mentioned we have the opportunity to apply for year two of this larger grant. What commitment do we need to give as a district for that? And I guess what I'm looking for ultimately is, when is the school committee gonna get to vote on this? Before we get to a point where we've received all this grant money, we've done all this planning, and we're that far into this that this committee's got no options other than to support this model?
Okay, good question.
Because I've been in that situation a number of times where, we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you. The next thing you know, there's a vote on the table and we say, well, what else do we don't vote for? Well, you really can't because we already got this money, we did all this work. So, I'm, I'm just curious, where in this process, the committee's gonna vote on whether or not we wanna stay on this path, accepting more grant money and going for this model? Or, do we wanna part ways, if you will, and continue planning, but not seeking this commitment for the...
Alright. So, right now, there's no, the bar planning grants are one-year process.
Which we're in now.
Which we're in now, with five other school communities in New England, five?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. And there was five from the prior cohort. We've done such a good job. We're not ready to move yet. But we've done such a good job that they've invited us, just us, to have another planning year. No commitment beyond that. If we can't pull the trigger after next year, we're out.
When you say can't pull the trigger, meaning what? Meaning there's not committee support to move to that model?
If there's not committee support, we don't have a good model in place.
You're not ready?
We're not ready.
So, you're ready to go, training has occurred, your model's set?
Only if the school committee approves it before that.
But then, if the, the committee decides that's not the direction it wants to go in?
We're out.
Well, so we're out of the grant. But then where does that lead the school?
Continue to try to implement some of the things without any support. The grant covers the support of all the technical assistance that we'd have to pay for.
Right. But it's a one-year, it's gonna be a one-year grant?
No. So...
Did I not just say that we're, year one's a planning grant?
We're in year one of a planning grant.
For another year?
No. They're giving us, they've asked us to go into a second planning year.
Okay.
They've never done this before.
Okay. So, what I'm saying is, at the end of that second planning grant?
Who'd apply.
We're done with grants. If the committee says, we're not willing to pull the trigger on this model?
We're done.
What prohibits us from going forward and doing a hybrid of that or something different?
We could without their support.
But then I've given a support. We'd be done with the second year of the planning grant. What support are you gonna give us?
Then we get a big grant for the three years to follow.
Oh, so there's another grant?
That's a big three-year grant.
Well, I guess that's the piece of, the, the question I asked that I didn't get the answer to. So, there's another potential third-year grant?
The other schools, the other four in this year's cohort are all applying now for the three-year grant, which is probably about, what, three-hundred-something a year for three years.
So, we have the planning grant, year we're in now?
Yes.
You're talking about we've been invited in, cuz we've, we hit it out of the park for year two?
Of a planning grant.
Planning grant, only, the second year.
No commitment?
Because we're not really there yet. At the end of that second-year planning grant?
You would apply.
For a three-year grant?
For a three-year grant.
And they would provide us this technical support to roll out the model?
Yeah.
That in year two or this upcoming year?
These guys and others.
That would be the assistance?
Yes. And the school committee would have to give us approval to do that. So, the school, that's why we'd have to get to the committee in the winter.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. When, when is the committee gonna decide whether or not we continue to stay the course and pursue the second-year grant and potentially a three-year extension with the assistance and roll out the program? When is the committee gonna take that?
Next year.
In this upcoming December?
Yes. I would like to get it in the winter to give us the time to be, because I know it's gonna take us a couple of months. So, the planning grant is just an extension.
And, and my comments, I'm, I'm not completely off the reservation on this one, meaning I'm not interested in it. I wanna hear more about it. And if it's gonna evolve, I'll, I'll keep, you know, an open mind to it. What I have concerns about now is the questions that I raised about enrollment. And maybe we'll see, you know, some more information about how that will look. Maybe we'll have some more data that we can chew over about students, how many we're taking in, how many we've surveyed that wanna go to something like this, will be further on.
I'd like to have another one of these meetings in the fall, early, that we can share with you a whole bunch of data, Mark, on progress that's been made.
So, there's no commitment, there's no commitment for the second-year grant? The only time we have to make a commitment is if we wanna...
The full one.
The full, the three years.
Extending our...
So, we can still do another year?
Planning grant.
To continue the planning and to work on the model. And the committee, you said, will get it sometime in December?
December.
And then we can make the decision then as to whether or not we do that.
So, I figured by January, we'd do a presentation, then you'd vet it in February. I think by March, you'd be making the decision.
So, I think that, to follow up on that, I wanna say we, as a full body, had to vote to not only apply for the bar grant, but all grants so that we don't get boxed in, as to Mr. Costa's point. I think that's a policy of the school committee. And I think that we took that vote to go into the original bar foundation grant. So, my concern, and just logistically, is that in order to apply for a second year...
It's not really, I used the wrong term. They're extending us the opportunity to extend the one-year planning grant. We've already been accepted. We don't have to do the same big, huge grant application.
Right. But as far as the school committee vote?
You've already voted on the planning grant.
So, we voted for a planning grant that was for one year.
Oh, it's a planning grant.
Well, you, you might think that. But the school committee, if they have to approve the grants, we approved the one-year grant. Now, this year, you're gonna apply for a second-year grant. It's my opinion that we should bring this to the full committee to say, well, basically what you just said. So, everybody on the committee's in, okay, we're gonna do the second-year planning. We're gonna pilot, just so you can have the opportunity to articulate what it is.
Yeah, yeah, alright, I get what you're saying.
Get everybody on the same page so that we say, okay, we're gonna do this. And to Mr. Costa's point, you can say publicly, we can have consultants come in, whoever, to say, at the end of this, we're not boxing ourselves into a corner, we're not having to change all these things. It's not an effort and fertility to go, you know? So, I think it would be good for the committee to say, we're gonna go for the second year, just like it should be for every grant. And I think the committee would probably go with that because it's planning, it's not necessarily boxing us in. We could maybe answer some of these questions between now and whenever that vote is. We could talk more offline if we had to, but I think it's something that we should do, Mr. Costa.
I got a question for Jan. You said seventy-five percent of the kids you talked to wanna go into this program. Of the seventy-five percent of the kids you talked to, how many of those kids were sent to RPA?
I would say fifty percent of them would be sent. Of that seventy-five percent?
So, fifty of the seventy-five percent?
And most of the students were sent because they were off-track and they needed credit recovery.
I, I, I'm saying they didn't go there under choice. They were sent to RPA. And that's a lot more than fifty percent. No, so, no, if you, if you're talking seventy, seventy-five percent...
I'm saying like, of seventy-five kids, yeah, probably more like seventy.
Alright. So, it's my position that as kids grow up and they learn how to act and you guys coach them up, they get ready to be successful, which is what happens when I was down there doing my mentoring classes, that's what happens. I saw kids that I thought were not doing well, but they were doing well in your school. But they were sent there. So, it's my position, that's part of what we're talking about. You're not gonna get choice kids going down there. I hate to break the news to all of you. But the kids that are there, that you can make into better students, better learners and better people, those are the ones you're gonna be mining. Now, some of those kids are gonna be the ones that stay to the side. And whether you put them in a CNA program because they're doing well, or they're absent and they miss it and they get thrown off, that's fine. But you're not gonna get choice kids going down there to pick that school.
And that's why we wanna start this right away with the current existing RPA students, because those are the students that we serve.
I started with that. I said, why don't we do this now? It's my position, you should be doing most of these things now. And I do think you do a lot of them anyway.
And that's, that's what we wanna do this year. We wanna actually just take a small group of students and almost separate them a little bit to see how it would go in its own ecosystem of this kind of learning.
There was nothing that would stop you from doing it two years ago.
That's why we're doing it now.
I know, but there was nothing to stop me from doing it two years ago. There's nothing to stop me from doing it last year.
I don't think we knew how to do it yet.
Okay. Well, then we're learning now. But we don't need a separate school with a separate number to do this kind of thing. It's my position, I, I mean, I probably won't even vote to extend the grant if that's what our target is. I'm not, I'm not a fan of this. I'm a fan of all the innovations that are involved in competency-based education. My position is, whether it's the CNA program or the partnership with People Inc., you're doing eighty percent of this stuff now. Do you need stronger people in certain positions? That's up to you. Do you need kids to buy in better? That's up to you. But I think you can do this stuff right now. It, it, it's, none of this stuff is, the only thing here is pie in the sky, is the land of the charters and the Catholic school kids picking it. I don't have a whit of belief in that at all. I don't know why it's in this paper. But it's my position that the kids you have there, that are doing well, if Paul Coogan's a grade ten and you say, Paul, you're starting to whistle, we wanna move you to an advanced program or give you some competency-based work, then I should be going right now.
And that's what we want to pilot next year.
Not waiting for another year of planning and all this stuff.
They're gonna be choosing to do this.
So, I, if I can just try and move it along a little bit. We have these gentlemen here from School of Maine.
Yeah.
So, I think a segueing from what Mr. Coogan raised, some valid points. You gentlemen, maybe just introduce yourself and then talk to us about some of the things you heard, some, maybe some things you wanna weigh in on, just so we can figure out, I don't really know what you do, you know?
Sure. Andy Back and Greg Wells from School of Maine Institute.
I'm sorry, what was that? I'm sorry.
Andy Back and Greg Wells. I actually came before the school committee, this school committee, maybe four or five years ago when Wraparound Zone, we were working on the Wraparound Zone initiative with Fall River. We were in some big school building, Arizona. Anyway, we work in the state of Massachusetts with a lot of school districts that are doing a lot of the same kind of things that you're talking about here. We also work nationally in a lot of places that, where people are trying to sort of meet the needs, all the specific needs of all their kids. And actually, you know, Matt, we work with Matt a bit and, and Ternow and Green a little bit, and Doran and Henry Lord and Talbot. And one of the things we see a lot of, quite frankly, right now, and I think Matt can attest to this as well, is that more and more, there are more and more sort of challenging needs that are in comprehensive high schools. And so, no one-size-fits-all, we know that, right? And more and more kids are opting for second-chance options, whether it's because the first chance is too large, there's not enough personalization, they feel lost, they have other kinds of challenges and struggles. And so, we see more and more places, as Jan mentioned, that are looking for personalized education, the right kind of fit for every kid. And, and whether you're... And, and whether you're, you know, an organized note-taker kind of learner, or you're a visual learner, or you're somebody who learns by doing, or you're somebody who learns through the community or other people, we, you know, our challenge is to find the right fit for you. And so, whether it's RPA, or whether it's a new school, or, or whether it's one school, the challenge is to meet the, the sort of ever-expanding needs of young people. And so, uh, people being trained to do that is challenging, because most people went to methods classes in, in college that didn't prepare you to be able to do personalized learning, competency-based learning, or, uh, deal with kids that have had trauma in their lives, uh, that affect their ability to focus or concentrate. So, a lot of what Jan and Rob have been visiting are places where a staff have gone through that kind of training, or are about to. Leadership has gone through that kind of experience, or are about to. And so then, looking at best ways to produce, develop, an education that will work for most kids. And so that's the kind of work we do, um, both with Fall River, but lots of other places as well.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add, so I'm, I'm relatively new to the School in Maine Institute. I was the National Director for Youth Employment at the U.S. Department of Labor for ten years. So the issue of workforce development hasn't really been put on the table this evening. I think that's an important component here, is that, um, when you think about making a choice, why does a young person choose to do something? It's because they see an opportunity at the end of that choice. And if young people see other young people going through a program that's quick, so they cuts down the opportunity cost or the amount of time, but it gets them to the point where they're able to have not only a, uh, the right credential to get into post-secondary education, to be able to go on to that next, that job, get on a career pathway, but it's done in a short amount of time. And it's viewed in the workplace as this notion of developing competency is rather than seat time, is quickly, you know, from my labor perspective, when we were working with, um, alternative education, Portland, Oregon is an example, there they have an interconnected system where they have lots of different schools of choice that provide different competency-based programs, and it was directly connected to the workforce development system. So, there's, there's other opportunities that emerge from, um, creating an alternative at high school that has choice, that's competency-based, that connects nice and neatly, or more neatly, with, with opportunities for workforce development, which ultimately then produces young people who are in the workforce, paying taxes, and, you know, has the economic impact of that, so... That's, you know, that's, that's, that's what I would add to the, to what Andy shared, was that there, that there is this, the, uh, tie-in to preparing young people from one, and that's, that's important.
In your work, either one of you, have you had systems, and I know I mentioned this through our staff here, but have you had systems where they had an established alternative program? Where they were looking to create, I guess if you will, a second school within a school with this same type of competency-based sort of focus?
Yes.
Is that predominantly the sort of, in the majority of school, I don't even have to quantify it for me, but is that something you often see?
Yes, there's a lot, there's a lot headed in that direction, for some of the reasons that you all mentioned. You know, whether it's, again, kids have greater needs than can be met by one type of education, or you have kids that are interested, uh, you know, and the environment isn't right for them, or kids that have challenges in their lives that really make it hard for them to focus. So, yeah, whether it's, you know, we were just in Waymouth not that long ago, and they were doing a whole audit of their alternative education programs for this exact reason. It's not one, even within the alternative system they have, not one-size-fits-all. So they were trying to figure out, what's the best use of resources, what's the best use of staff? How do we, you know, meet the needs that our kids have?
Cambridge does that, Waymouth does that.
And I think it makes good sense. I mean, obviously, you want the students to be engaged. If you just put them in an RPA, and just try to engage them with that one sole focus-
Right.
Comes bored, and that may be what drove them out of our, our traditional schools.
I mean, to be honest, we've, we've had, we've seen kids that were school-phobic, that missed a hundred and eighty days of school, or, you know, attended to, who, whose attendance at a, at a school like this is, is a hundred percent. Uh, and it's not that the other school didn't have more to offer in terms of options.
It was a better fit.
Yeah, it was a better fit, right.
Something, that was why, the question I asked, what's gonna be your stick? Like, why? What is gonna draw those students to say, that's where I wanna go?
And, and what Jan said strikes me as, there's a hunger there from kids already around this type of approach. You know, personalized competency-based inability to feel successful, and to feel in charge of their own education, and be able to move at their own pace, you know, through, through maybe courses that have been challenging for them in the past.
So the traditional alternative-type setting that you're talking about, was that in regular schools, charter schools?
No, no, public high school, yeah.
The, the problem of the students that are sent for behavior reasons to the current school, that's my sticking point.
Yeah.
And-
That's a real point.
You're saying that there's schools that have done the same thing, so they'll have students in the, maybe you could get to them to get to us some of the, I'd like to look at the research on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't wanna go into a long, drawn-out thing over the trips that we took. I would like to get some feedback on what the schools were like, were they charter schools? Were they schools that could, kids could just get kicked out of if they didn't act up, you know, appropriately, or just some of that kind of background, because I'm not convinced that it's the best thing to put them all in one. It can be sold, but I just-
No, no, I, I don't disagree with you. I think there are, again, there just needs to be options. And, and it may not be in the same building, it may be, or it may be in the same building in a different spot, but you have to have options for kids. And, and so, there are kids who, you know, we, we've been part of schools where kids have been incarcerated and come out of incarceration, and it takes time for them to readjust. And so they need a different kind of learning environment than, say, an open campus or something like that.
Mr. Coogan?
You, you said Waymouth split their alternative school?
No, Waymouth did an audit on their alternative school.
Did Cambridge split their alternative school?
Yeah, Cambridge.
They split it?
Yeah.
When did they do that?
A while ago, years ago.
Oh.
We have three in Brockton.
Those are three separate schools. You have, you and I have gone over that.
Yeah.
But, but as far as splitting a school-
Yeah, so Waymouth, for example, had a school where kids who were hospitalized and, uh, and/or, you know, in, in, for mal-health issues or other reasons, would come back into the alternative school. And they realized the alternative school wasn't, uh, strong enough, or didn't have enough resources perhaps, to meet their needs. So they created another alternative for kids that had come out of that kind of environment, to, to support those kids.
So they're listed on Waymouth's website? They have, they have, how many alternative schools do they have listed?
I, I don't know if they're listed on their website, but you can call-
Yeah, I'll find out, but I, I see, for two hundred kids, I'm not worried about having a separate school. I'm more worried about the services the kids are getting.
Sure.
Okay.
The, um, you've done a study, you said you were in all schools, but you said you worked in all of the schools?
Yeah.
Roughly a lot of the schools.
Well, in alternative schools, yes.
But you just mentioned all the regular schools as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you have a little knowledge of the schools.
Fall River, yeah.
So, one of the things that, and it's mentioned in here somewhere, is students that are not able to be educated in a regular school, behaviorally, emotionally, for whatever reasons. I think that's one of the major issues that we have across our, all of our schools.
Mm-hmm.
Do you concur with that from what you know, and what are we doing with that as far as what you know, just?
Not sure I understand totally the question. So, do we see kids struggling? Do we see kids not being able to, um, connect with the instruction or the learning environment? Is that, is that what you mean?
K to twelve, because you mentioned some elementary schools and the like. So if I'm listening to what you said and what everybody says, is that we have students that have a variety of needs, and they need to have options along the way. I'm of the belief that we don't have many options in the elementary grades, and that's one of our biggest problems.
Yeah.
So we have that, no options there, so we have not-so-good things happening in some places. And then the people who wanna send their students to here are having to deal with kids that are doing some not-so-good things in school. They end up going away, and then we never get them back. It's like a mass exodus of, of that type of student in Fall River.
Yeah.
And I'm hearing all of this, and I'm saying, okay, are we really addressing the issue of, what do we have? Based on everything I heard from you, we should be having an alternative, uh, option for these type of students as well. If you're telling me, we need it for the high school, we need it for the middle school, why don't we need it for elementary?
Sixth graders. I'd like to get RPA to sixth grade.
I'm separate from that, just a general.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what we've seen in elementary schools, again, are, um, the focus on social-emotional connections is really making a difference for younger kids, and so the, the, the ability to get to kids earlier who are struggling, and, and the ability to have them develop the kind of relationships with faculty, or with teachers, with staff, where they feel cared for, they, they, even though they're struggling, they don't feel like it's failure, they feel like there's a pathway for them, uh, and people will help them get there. That seems to work a lot better the younger you are, than as you get older, and, and it becomes more compartmentalized and-
What happens when it doesn't work, is my question.
Well, yeah, then there are programs, there are substantial separate programs, there are other kinds of programs that districts run to support those kids.
I think that's something to explore.
Yeah.
Just my own personal opinion, but I wanna try and move this along, at least to get to the next general.
But just my last point on this, is that, in Fall River, like in most places, you have wonderful kids. And, and, you know, the schools that we've been a part of, there are kids with, you know, spirit and vigor and spunk. Uh, and not, some, you know, everybody learns in a different way, just like there are people out in the world who gravitate towards one occupation versus another, or people who are good public speakers versus people who are shy. Not everybody learns in the same way or in the same climate, and, and it doesn't mean that they're not great kids.
You have a question?
No, just thank you very much.
I just have one other question, or just, you work as a private-
We're a nonprofit.
Nonprofit. Are you working through the grant, like, where are you getting paid from? Through the BAR grants, or the planning grant is paying you, folks?
Yeah.
So you just get the BAR?
We get, we get, we get technical assistance money through the bar.
From there?
From the bar.
The BAR grant, the BAR Foundation has a place called-
Spring Point.
Spring, I was gonna say School Point, but-
Yeah, Spring Point.
On their website, it says that's their-
That's their-
Their technical person. So how do you get involved?
We know Spring Point, because we've worked with Spring Point nationally on other work. So, they're, they're BAR's technical assistance provider, and you could look at-
You're complimenting them, but Spring Point's still involved through the BAR.
As part of the, yes, Spring Point is the provider. For us to write the application, we needed, uh, what do we call it? A proven practitioner. Uh, the first time we applied, we used, uh, a big-picture learning company out of Providence. It wasn't successful. In this one, we said, let's work with School in Maine, since we've had a better relationship with, uh, with working with them historically on several projects. We, we met with them and said, we like this model. We incorporated them into the, the planning grant as our thought partner, and that was-
So the BAR Foundation is okay with this arrangement?
They approved it.
So whatever we have to do, so. I think, um, I appreciate you coming, and the information from everyone. I think you're doing a lot of good work at RPA, quite frankly. We wanna continue to support it. There's some questions here, and I don't want it to look like a negative, it's, it's for me. Just, we have some questions and concerns, and the more information we get, I think we can get on the same page. Do you think we should, uh, either one of you think that we should either continue this, maybe for another alternative subcommittee meeting? Do we need, wanna request that the second-year pilot come to the full committee? So at least the rest of the members can get on the same page with us, and, you know, at a, at a full meeting?
Is it a separate application grant? Or you said you were invited in because of the work we've done?
We were invited in because of the work we've done.
It's a separate grant, it's a cycle of process, then I would say the committee probably should weigh in.
Right, maybe I would. But I'd rather go with the committee, if the committee says no, then I don't have to waste another year of planning. You understand what I'm saying? So I'd rather bring it to the committee right now.
For?
For full, for, for implementation? No, for the second year of the planning. Because if the committee says no to the planning, there's no point in trying to go forward.
I can tell you right now, my position on, on the second year would be to continue to do the work. I just wanted to know, when is it gonna get to us? We're gonna have to make a determination. And, and so if that's after year two, continue to do the work, maybe some of the questions I have will start to flush themselves out as part of that work. I wouldn't say no to the second-year planning, not knowing what the results may be.
Right.
That'd be foolish. Like, let the process play out. I just wanna know, at what point are we at that point? Do we have to take a vote to either go or no-go? And if we're not there yet, that's great. Keep planning, keep looking at it.
We would bring a proposal forward next year, and you would at that time say, we're not gonna do this, or we are gonna do it. And at that time, we would apply.
And so my, my, my suggestion through the chair to you would be, bring it to the full committee, have a discussion about what your expected outcomes will be in year two, what you're looking to provide in terms of opportunities for the students there, and inform the committee about what's going on, so that if there are concerns or questions, maybe they can be raised and posed, and you can answer those in the second-year of planning. So that when you're finished with it, if it's ready to go, we've already incorporated some of the concerns that the committee has. If they can't be incorporated, or you can't address them, then when we get to the end of year two, the committee will decide whether or not they wanna go forward with it.
If that's smart.
To keep the full committee, so I don't say in a doc, because I'm not making it sound like this is all happening without anybody knowing, but without having this dialogue with us now, later on, we may get to the point where we raise issues that you could've addressed in year two in planning, and you didn't. And now that may be the, the hitch for some, and say, just not gonna do it.
That's why I think it's smart to go to the full committee in May with a request to, uh, permission to, uh, apply for the second-year of planning.
And other people could, other members could ask similar questions after we get a different package, so is that a motion?
To refer to the full committee?
Yeah.
Presentation in May, or whatever the school?
May.
I'd like to make that a full motion and for, for discussion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I think that's a good idea. We'll get on the same page, and, um, obviously, more information we get, we could appreciate some things. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Good seeing y'all.
See you soon.
The only, we'll try and go through the agenda. Uh, we do have a couple of other items, but I do wanna just say, the last one is related to discipline, so if, I know usually the schools come and leave, but I might have a few questions on the last one, so if you guys could hang tight with us, so-
We could put that, take it out of order, too.
Do you wanna take it out of order?
I would, while they're here.
Discipline, yeah. We'll take it out of order. Second move, all in favor? Aye. So we're gonna take out of order the discussion on attendance and conduct analysis. So I know the superintendent just left. Dr. Davina, you, is this one of your-
It's, it's okay, I can record with this. Brian Michael Azza, who is in charge of our student management system, printed out this information that the superintendent had asked that we bring before you. So, again, we're really not comparing apples to oranges, because as you can see, you know, even looking at our enrollment, uh, our enrollment from October one, two thousand and seventeen, compared to June, two thousand and eighteen, versus all the way to the very end, and I apologize, because I don't think this is, you know, a really, um, good format. We will get better with that, but then over on the right, you'll see what our October one enrollment was for this year. So there you can compare how many students are in our system, and then you can see, uh, the attendance, which is through June of, uh, two thousand and eighteen, compared to what our current attendance up until through, uh, March thirty-first, on April, uh, first, he took this. So again, it's not comparing the full year, but it's giving you an idea. Overall, in looking at our attendance, you can see that we've remained pretty flat. Uh, we really haven't moved the needle. We've moved the needle in a few places. We've done a little bit better, and in other places, we may have decreased a little bit, but overall, um, it's pretty much stayed the same. You have a document right before that, that I'll just reference to say. Cindy Kudo has taken over Barbara Allard's, uh, Community Attendance Task Force. They meet very regularly, at least monthly, and we're grateful for all of our community partners that work with us on such events as, um, you know, the high fives welcoming the kids back to school, the super, um, certificates that are given, the, um, T-shirts that they have created, the coloring books, et cetera. But, um, you know, we're concerned, because we haven't moved that needle, we're pretty flat on that. Um, and then the other, um, thing that was asked for was looking at out-of-school suspensions from last year to out-of-school suspensions, again, as of, uh, March through March thirty-first, printed, uh, for us on April first. And you can see, we have significantly decreased the number of students who have been given out-of-school suspensions. So I think a little bit on what School in Maine, uh, referred to. They're working with us on, um, an SFSS grant, um, where we're looking at systems for student support. And just like we assess kids academically for math, science, social studies, we're looking at, how do we assess kids for mental health? So we've been spending, um, a couple of years doing- a couple of years doing responsive classroom training, positive behavioral intervention supports at some of our schools. So looking at out-of-school suspensions, it looks like some of the work that we've started to do around social emotional learning is starting to have an effect. So again, I'll leave it to my colleagues to answer if you have any questions.
Can I just ask how that's measured?
Well-
How do you know that the, the social emotional learning and the responsive classroom stuff is actually attributing to less out-of-school students?
Great question. Right now, the only instrument or tool that we have is the Conditions for Learning survey, which is much more qualitative, although there is some quantitative, such as attendance and suspension and discipline and whatnot. But as part of, we are working with eight other districts across the Commonwealth and that's what we're trying to come up with actually as a state, but particularly for Fall River. How would we measure that? What kind of instrument? You approved us to be able to give the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. We have the expert that the nurses give to as well and administer, but again, it's a little of this and a little of that and that's what we're trying to design is a really good tool. But right now, we, we're using the Conditions for Learning.
I applaud that at this time of the year, it does look like the out-of-school suspensions have, have, you know, decreased or the number of them have reduced. But I, you know, that's why I asked the question, because I, if it is as a, as a result of the social emotional learning, the responsive classrooms, that kind of intervention, then that's great. But I don't know that we know that that's the case. We know we're doing it, we're thinking it may be working, maybe we're seeing some other evidence of that, but I'd really like to drill down on that because if that's the ticket to improving out-of-school suspensions, then we have to look at, how much are we doing? How much more of it can we do? And if we continue to stay on this path, then great, because we've kept students in school and reduced their time at home, not learning.
And we have a lot of our schools that are involved in some of the MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support through the Department of Ed, the academies. One of them is PBIS and we have a lot of our schools either in year one, year two, or year three. And next year, they're coming out with one specifically on mental health, which is wonderful because we'll go through that training. We administered the Conditions for Learning in October. Our plan is to administer it again after MCAS is all done, probably the last week in June. And then we'll have, for the first time, a pre and a post in one school year then too as well.
Because if it's attributed to the stuff you just talked about, that's great.
Yeah.
If it's attributed to, you know, an edict that we need to reduce the number of out-of-school suspensions, so now when we look at a situation, we say, gee, you know what, typically I would send this student, but you know what, we're kind of high on, our numbers have been high traditionally, so maybe we'll keep that student here in school. That's not the intervention I'm looking for. So if we could continue to focus on something that measures?
Absolutely.
What's, what's working, what's not, and provide that, I'd be more interested in hearing those types of, you know, that, that type of information.
And collecting that data, I'm happy to share it with you too as well.
Thank you.
I don't get the sense from meeting with the administrators and because of the OCR complaint from 2012 where there was the allegation that we were suspending more minorities?
That's kind of the, the direction I was leaning and, and I didn't know if it was a result of that, that, okay, we can't be on that radar anymore, so let's reduce the number of out-of-school suspensions. So if that's not the case, great. If it's more attributed to some of the other interventions that you've, you've shared with us tonight, that's great. I'm just looking for some data that supports that that's really where it's coming from. And can it be measured? I don't, I don't know. But I leave that to all of you to kind of-
There's a research-based tool, Conditions for Learning, and I understand that it was administered a year ago, but it wasn't measured comprehensively across the district. So in October, it was, but now that's really our baseline.
Right.
So we will do it again in June and then we are recommending we will do it on an annual basis at that point in time. But my sense, again, it's qualitative from speaking with the principal colleagues, right now, they are feeling that they have invested as much academically into social emotional learning, time, money, and are starting to feel that they're seeing those benefits. We also have the good fortune in working with Bay Coast Bank on our social emotional initiatives. We'll be running several more responsive classroom training sessions in June and again in August. So we'll have more staff engaging in that.
I can, I am.
I, I just, you know, this is very confusing, you know that. I mean, you've got October 1 at the beginning and the end, you've got OSS for the whole year, then you've got OSS to this at the fall 1. I mean, it's apples and oranges.
I said that, yes. So at our next meeting, you know, hopefully we could have the end of last year and the end of this year.
And the trend, obviously the trends for the out-of-school suspension is very good. That's what I take from this, but other than that, you don't get a lot from it. Thanks.
So maybe, maybe we could just get it sent to the full committee in a better format, as you said. My question would be a couple on OSS would be ISS?
Out-of-school suspensions.
No, ISS.
Oh, you want ISS.
So that would be a good comparison. Are we using ISS instead of OSS?
We track that next to.
At Durf, we don't have ISS. We do it at the other schools.
So we could just, on that court, if you put zero or doesn't exist, I wonder why that it's not the case, but that's just another subject. I have some of the same concerns my colleague has about these numbers, whether they're actually addressing just compliance with lowering the number, or is it truly behaviors are that much improved over what we've had? I've, I look at a school with 757 students and two out-of-school suspensions so far this year and I wonder whether, how that is even possible. We talked about it at some of the other meetings, some of the other schools came out of, wow, this is amazing that. I think those numbers need to be looked at a little bit to see if what my colleague mentioned is actually happening, whether people are not suspending. And if you don't have in-school suspension, that's why the in-school suspension number would make sense. So there was other options, but I, I really am concerned about the behaviors and the tolerance with the behaviors in all of the schools as a general statement. But Mr. Correa, I had a question on the RPA numbers. Are these numbers your numbers for only your school or do these kids, if a kid gets carried in from another school that you now accept these numbers or are they?
These, these numbers reflect what RPA has-
Just at your school?
Correct.
Now, if a student was at Durf or now your middle school too, but the same?
That will change though at the end of the year. When the DESE does their reporting, I had a conversation with Stacy Gaboral and Lisa Hahn, just last week, I'm sorry, that's not last, it was April 4th, where they were discussing reporting, reporting out. And they, they actually read to me the process that they go through and it states that if a student is transferred to another school in district, the sending school keeps that record until the end of the year reporting. So if someone, in essence, if someone was sent to RPA in January from Durf, Durf would keep on their record until January, all their suspensions and attendance. From January, from the date of January to the end of the year, whatever accumulated through RPA would be their own, would be ours. That would be ours. However, at the August reporting time, when they do the end of the year report, they use the common denominator, meaning that they, they actually combine the two totals together and whatever school that student is enrolled at, that school owns it.
I mean, it's good, good to know, just comparing apples to apples. I mean, if it's one thing, whether it's your school, Durf, or the middle schools, truth in the reporting would, would kind of, because those reports come out later. So now the reports come out, X school has this number, we would have to know what, if you want to compare it. And you have, it says here 77 to date and then 80 from 17, 18, is that, so that's the whole year later? So how do you personally think it's been going?
Well, we've, this year, we've incorporated restorative justice as, as a process for alternative discipline. And by using that process, we also had, I also asked Brian Michael Azak to put that in our view in X2. So we record how many students are going through restorative justice. And as right now, at, at this particular time, we have 39 students that are going through restorative justice.
So they might be in this, but they might not, depends on the issue.
So we are, we are trying to move the needle so that we're not suspending as much.
Do you have ISS?
We do have ISS.
So there's some kids coded at your place with ISS, so when we get that report, we'll show. Mr. Demas, could I have you come up for a second just a? Thank you for joining us. So I know you just mentioned that you don't have the ISS.
Correct.
I think you probably like that.
I would, I would note, I would note that from the state's point of view, they're both a suspension on the numbers.
Yeah.
They're in the same pot. It doesn't matter.
But you, as the principal of a school with 2,000 students, having an ISS option, would you like that?
Would be a good option, yes.
So I just looked at your numbers for the year so far, with 146 it says, out of 2,000 students. How do you feel, as a similar question that I asked Mr. Correa, just how do you feel it's going with that? Is it, are things up? Is it down? I see a lot of the reports that come in and quite frankly, I get concerned sometimes with some of the things you're dealing with up there.
Sure.
And when I take that info and look at this number, I'm not sure that they're balancing out in my own personal opinion, but I wanted to give a chance to be in.
Well, I think what, what we're seeing is, is that the staff, teachers, administrators alike are, are getting more adept at handling student behaviors in, in that, something that maybe last year started as a small infraction, then maybe a conversation or a detention. Students aren't getting triggered to then take it to another level. So I think in, in the way that we intervene and respond to students at the initial point of contact, we're getting better at. I'm not saying that we caused a lot of the suspensions, but I think that maybe we did cause some of them. I think another piece is that last year, we had a rough and tumble year, let's say, and, and some of the violent things that happened, we decided to go all in on, on a lengthy suspension. And rather than deciding, well, this wasn't so bad of a fight, let's give them a couple of days, we're, we're dropping the hammer. Okay? And so when, when you get down and you break it down to what the infractions are that are leading to suspensions, our fights are way down this year and that's a good thing. So I think just the general vibe of the school i- is, is a very positive environment this year. That's not to say that we don't have problems and you get the reports of the things that, that come up, that are the major things. So it's an effect that I think overall in terms of, of the approach, that our seniors, our seniors came in as freshmen into, into the, the first year of the new model, the freshman academy. And so they experienced a, a different response to their behavior at the beginning of their high school career. And so I think that that changed a lot of students' outlook towards school.
The, the number that I quoted that's in here, maybe you can, is that the number of days or is that, that number of suspensions?
146 would be the number of individual suspensions.
Suspensions.
Yes, sir. Can you, just on that, and I don't, could that be the same individual with multiple suspensions?
Yes.
Is there a way to break that out?
There is.
You know, looking at that, you know, it could be 146, but it could be the same 50 students, you know? And I think that's important as opposed to looking at 146 different students or, you know, suspensions, it could be 50 students with multiple. And so if that could be flushed out a little bit too-
Just that goes in the SSDI report at the end of the year.
Just so that, you know, you get a better sense of, of the total number of students there. Are we talking a small number? Like years ago at, at Morton, we had probably about 25 students there that were really rocking the ship. And so we developed the RPA middle school program and we identified those students who were rocking the ship and we moved them and the school settled right down. So that's the kind of stuff, I mean, if the high schools experiencing, you know, 50 suspensions, but they're the same individuals, that tells a different picture than 146. And so I'm glad the question was asked because if we could break that out a little further, give us a better sense of how many individuals we're dealing with and are they repeat offenders?
You can break it back at the end of the year and we can also highlight what those offenses were doing as well.
Right. And then I think it's beneficial for the administration. I would imagine, Mr. Demas, you'd want that information so that you can, and you probably know the players anyway, but at least you can identify them and say, I gotta go talk to Mr. Correa because this person was responsible for X amount of suspensions multiple times. Maybe this isn't the setting for that individual, maybe, you know, needs to be RPA. And so I think that information at your fingertips, knowing how many you have, who it is, how many times it's happened, as opposed to, you could get that, I'm sure, through your, your judgment councils and other means, but maybe that's a, a piece of information that could be helpful. I yield. Thanks.
So, thank you. My last question related to this analysis and the context was a little off the topic, but the issue that we had at the last meeting of a program that we needed to create at RPA because there was identified students at Durf that needed to go to RPA. Can we get an update on that? Where, it's now-
Sub-separate.
Five months after? What's going on?
Mr. Correa's program is coming.
No, no, not that. We, we were told about that. We needed, we had 12 kids identified that we were going to put in and five months ago, we said, it was urgent at that point and figured this is the next meeting. Has it happened? If not, why? What are we doing? If there's no more need?
So we have, we have an alter, we have, we have a sped, subseparate behavioral program now at Resiliency, hired teacher, para, I believe we got five kids in right now. They can take up to 12. We've taken the kids that have been referred and-
It's up and running.
It's up and running.
So at RPA, they have the old subseparate class and we have a new class, you're telling me, with how many students that came from, I believe it was from Durf identified that was part of the, so you're telling me we have another class with five new students that are beyond, is that accurate?
Three special ed.
We have, we have three special ed teachers right now. We just hired another special ed for that.
In early April.
In early April, because we couldn't find, we couldn't find them. And at this point, that subseparate teacher is being used as an inclusion teacher right now because we do not have any referrals.
We just said we have five kids. Where's those five kids?
We have, we have five kids from the seven through nine group.
It's more the middle school that we had the need for and we have sent more students from the middle school over to RPA in, to my knowledge, than we have from Durf this year.
All right, maybe, I'm just not getting it. We were told that we needed a high school program to send 12 kids that were identified six months, five or six months ago at the last meeting, to create a second emotional, social emotional type, subseparate class at RPA, to move those kids from there to there. We were told now, we've got five kids in that program. Now you're telling me, it's not in that program, it's five kids in the program that already existed.
Five or six.
But the program existed, that the subseparate middle school already existed. We had the high school in here, so there's, there's no new-
Until the third teacher was hired. And now you're able to meet the needs of all of the teachers.
Yes, yes.
Can you repeat that to the side of the conversation?
So the way I understand it, with just the two special ed teachers, we were not in compliance, meeting the needs of the students according to their IEPs, and we needed the third teacher to make sure that all of the goals and objectives were being met.
For the existing students, but I think what Mr. Aga was talking about was the, the need that the high school had for, the numbers stated as 12, to go over to, to the RPA-
It wasn't.
For a, a new model or a new program. What, what I think I'm hearing is that it, it's not a new program. All you've done is added an additional teacher to the existing program you had and only five of them now are there.
Right. So they can only take 12 in each class under the-
Special ed regulations.
I'm not saying it's 12. I'm just saying that the number has been used.
We couldn't send any more because they were at 12. We added a teacher. He hired a teacher. It took him a long time. Finding a sped, subseparate teacher is not easy. We now have that teacher. I believe, from my count the other day, talking to the teacher who just started, he said he had five on his caseload.
So try and be patient.
Who are the sped kids at the high school that we have issues with placement right now? Are there any?
At Durf, right?
Yeah.
Currently, we have possibly one student that we may be sending over.
So in the effort of just being right to the point and not trying to belabor the point, we were told by Dr. Dagen at the meeting, the last meeting, and yourself, that we had this need for a special, a subseparate, in addition to the 12 high school, subseparate kids at RPA. We had this tremendous need that we had to rush this thing through- We had this tremendous need, that we had to rush this thing through, and we had to get this teacher. We, we were told that here, go look at the camera, go look at the minutes.
Did it happen?
Okay, it didn't happen.
It did.
No, it didn't, because we never hired the other person. And then we say we hired the person to do the middle school, that's in a different program, that we don't have the 12 kids that we were told. You go back to the tapes and look at it, we were told by a subcommittee here, that it was urgent that we had to do this now. We all had a debate, do we wanna take the whole thing from Derfi, back and forth? Not gonna be, be labor that point. The bottom line is, is that we were told that this gentleman had 12 kids at Derfi that needed to get out of there for the good of the children, and put them properly placed in a subseparate at RPA. That didn't happen, there's no, there's no classroom, and we're being told different information by all different people here. And quite frankly, it's, it's frustrating, and you need to get on the same page as far as this one member. Because if we come to just ask a question, and there's three different answers, and you guys don't know what's going on, that tells me that you're not communicating appropriately amongst each other.
I think you're confused, so that's not a fair accusation to make about my people.
Okay, so you tell me then.
I'll defend my people.
Okay, so defend...
And I will answer your question, so ask me your question, please.
You just did, and you answered it in error.
I hired a teacher, I didn't hire, say it in error, I hired a teacher. There was never 12 kids at Derfi who were moving out. You got confused, sir, between the argument, the conversation, about the entirety of the bridge program. We had a couple of kids who were sped, subseparate kids, that we could not send to RPA, because those classrooms at RPA were full. We needed that teacher, I don't care if it was one kid or two kids that were above 12, we couldn't put any more in there. We've hired that teacher, they have the caseload, he's got another kid he's trying to put out. I don't understand how we haven't answered your question.
Because, because you're answering it with wrong information, false information, quite frankly.
I think you were confused in understanding what we did in the first place.
How many kids, Mr. Correa, how many students that when we said we were at the maximum, that they couldn't send any more kids to your school? That high school subseparate, how many kids are in your school right now, since that meeting, from that new teacher being hired? How many?
There was no high school subseparate at his school, they were always doing inclusion.
You have subseparate at your school?
There was none, right now I have two, right now.
Have you ever?
Have I, have I?
Yeah, I mean, what, what are you talking here? We're gonna try and say we don't have subseparate at the high school?
We lost one, and that's why we needed to add it.
With all due respect, sir.
Am I wrong or right?
You said, you just said...
All right, I'm not gonna argue with you, Mr. Agia.
Okay, but I'm gonna ask you a...
Is this on the agenda?
So...
Is this on the agenda?
The question is, yes, it is.
I don't know, I don't see it right now. I don't see that, we're not talking about sped, subseparate.
So, I'll, I'll run the meeting, if we ask you a question, you can answer it, be respectful.
But I'm not prepared to even put this on the agenda, sir.
All I'm asking is...
So if you ask my people, prepare.
Point of order, point of order. I'm not gonna get mad with you, I ask a question, you get an answer, you give an answer. If you give a false information or wrong information, expect to get called on it by me or any of my colleagues.
Well, maybe if you ask us to be prepared to discuss this today, Mr. Agia, which you didn't, it's not on the agenda.
So, the question I ask, and if you don't wanna answer, then you don't have to answer. The question I ask is how many people...
And they don't have to answer either, I'll answer for you.
How many people at the high school are in the subseparate classroom? And right now, you told me that there's none.
Five?
Five. That are in the middle school.
That's in, five are in the middle school.
Correct, and I'm asking the question, how many at the high school? High school, from the, the issue that we talked about, needing that position, that's all I'm asking. And you're telling me that we had the need before, and now you're telling me we have none.
At the time, when this was discussed, we had 12 students in the high school program.
You were at capacity.
With, with a...
You were at capacity.
So you're saying you actually have a s- high school subseparate at your place with 12 students in it? I agree. We wanted to create a new one, give you the teacher, the committee supported it, to give you a permission to add another one, so we could have 12 more. That would make 24. We started with 12, we weren't gonna add it to get to 24. That's the point I'm trying to get to. So, all I'm asking is, where are the 12 that we were told were ready to come from the high school, that needed, because of the needs, to go to that other? You're telling me right now, we still only have 12 slots at the high school?
Mr. Agia, clarity, on my part, I need clarity on my part. Uh, we had a high scho, we have a high school subseparate classroom. It was at capacity. I'm not sure what the number was, that was discussed, coming from the high school to RPA. But we did, we do, we did need another t, a special ed teacher at that time to accommodate that transfer. Or what, for how many students were gonna be sent?
You needed to go above the 12 that you...
We were at capacity.
At capacity, in the subseparate environment. So we, as a committee, approved another teacher, so that we could take that capacity of 12 and make that capacity 24. Is what I was told by the committee, by everyone, that that's what we needed, and it was urgent. Up to 24.
Up to 24.
Correct, we could grow it, and right now there's five.
And all I'm saying, and all I was asking, is how many now, that we've now done, in addition to 12 at the high school level that we were talking about? Because we weren't talking middle school at the time, and we weren't talking other services. So out of the 12, how many new, of those high school kids that we told, we were told it was urgent five months ago, are in that s- subseparate program at RPA right now?
The high school program at the ti, I have to go back a little bit.
Sure, yeah, I'm not gonna hold you to that.
And I, I didn't prepare for this, so... As far as the need for the high school students, some of the high school students in that subseparate transferred out, or dropped, and, and openings were made. Because of that. We contacted Derfi, Derfi did send some students, they filled the openings. So we did get back to capacity by that.
The original capacity.
Original capacity. So there were some transfers done.
Up to 24 is my concern, is i- if I was a member of the committee that voted to give it 20, up to 24, it sounds to me like what I'm hearing, is that we no longer have the up to 24 for the high school age care.
As, as of right now, I can only say that I have no, I've had no students recommended. I had had students recommended prior, we did make room for them, there they are. We did get more middle school students in, we used that teacher for that, for that purpose.
So we don't have the second subseparate right now?
But we don't have a sep, self, a second subseparate.
I'm not necessarily in agreement with that, but a- at least it's, we get to the answer of that we don't have... And we were also told that there was kids coming from DSS and other places that were, were needed, so that we didn't have out-of-district placements, to, to have that extra capacity at that second subseparate at RPA, and we currently still don't have that. So I'm gonna just leave it here to just say, please try and get, so that it's, they're fully staffed, and that we, if we have up to 24 subseparate kids, and they have needs from the high school and things, let's just do what we gotta do to move. That's the point of this, was just to get an update while the whole schools are here. And, you know, at the end of the day, we're trying to, to give you support and to service the kids, but we also gotta hold the line on trying to get accurate information. So we'll move on to the next agenda item. You have, Mr. Costner? So we're gonna go back to the second discussion item, thank you, gentlemen, if you wanna stick around, well, you have the bridge, right, so?
Yeah, I'll be in there.
So, Mr. Correa, if you wanna stick around anymore, then welcome, it's up to you. Out-of-district diploma.
So, um, this is more an FYI, um, it was actually brought to our attention by a parent who had a, has a child in an out-of-district placement, and was told that the child would be receiving a City of Fall River diploma. We're not talking about students at RPA, we're talking about the Stone students, and we're talking about the students who are in out-of-district placements. So we're talking about special education students. And so, um, I brought the concern to Michael Joyce, our school attorney, and said, um, can we administer a different diploma to our special education students in out-of-district placement? And you have his legal opinion here, and his legal opinion at this point in time is that because we are approving the programs at Stone, as well as, which is considered an out-of-district placement, as well as our collaborative students, the students that go out, they really fall under the guise of, um, Derfi High School, and so they should be receiving a Derfi High School diploma and not a City of Fall River. And the basis for that really is, is at some point in time, somebody could say we're discriminating, because they're not being awarded a Derfi diploma, and yet we approve their curriculum.
So, Mr. Costner?
Why was that ever in question? If, if, if the program needs to be comparable to the needs of that student, and we approve that, why was that ever in question?
I think we've tried to research it, and I think it's gone be- beyond the time when most of us were here at the table in districts. So it's been a while that this has happened, um, so we wanna fix the error now.
So there's a change needed, it's not that there's no change needed. This is here to recommend a, a...
A Derfi diploma.
Keep it as is, or you're recommending a change?
A change.
A change, a Derfi diploma rather than a City of Fall River.
No, we're not asking for a policy change, we were just doing it. The school can be never voted on that. It's not a policy change.
So, it's a practice.
We're just gonna fix our practice.
Right.
In line with what Attorney Joyce says we should be doing.
So, if a student that goes to, is a ninth grade student entering, and they never stepped foot in Derfi High School, and they go to an out-of-district placement for four years and graduate.
And, and beat their expectations for a diploma, pass the MCAS.
For a diploma.
For a diploma.
They're gonna get a Derfi High...
Yes.
Is what you're telling me, the lawyers are saying, and what we have to do, even though they've never stepped foot in Derfi?
That's exactly what would happen in some circumstances.
That happens in other places?
Yes, we oversee their program, you know, we still have to have the annual team meeting.
Not the kids at RPA.
And these are not the children who haven't passed MCAS. Um, the, you know, the children who don't pass MCAS are just gonna get a certificate of attendance. These are the children who...
From Derfi.
Correct, they have truly passed MCAS, um, and we've vetted that they have met the program requirements.
And RPA gets a RPA?
Correct.
Diploma that says RPA.
Correct.
I wasn't aware of that, but honestly, I'm not, I'm a little confused by it personally, because it, looking at Mr. Damaris as a principal, right? The kids never stepped foot in your school.
It's not to their fault, it's not their fault.
No, I get it, but I'm just saying, it just, i- i- it's an awkwardness of that situation. Like, wow, you get a diploma from a school that you've never actually been in.
However, um, uh, staff from Derfi do attend the annual IEP meetings. So there are people from his school vetting that IEP and the program placement.
I understand, so I think we're, you're good, you don't need anything from us on that. My only comment on it would be based on, and I'm not looking to open up a can of worms for the last conversation about the program of studies, and the classes, and the courses, and what they're called, just keeping that in mind, that all these other places are comparable. I would say that's something we should always monitor very closely, and I'm sure you are. So, nothing needed from us. Thank you for that. Uh, next up is special ed program evaluation.
And this is really just giving you an update, um, as you know, we've engaged, uh, the services of Walker Partnership. Uh, they have been working with us in the district since early March. Michael Loesch, our special education director, put this timeline together just to let you know where we are in the process. Um, they are almost completed all of their in-school visits and observations. Uh, they've got a couple of things that they need to go back and check on. They like to triage everything, so that they are, uh, making sure that, uh, when they hear information, they're seeing it as well, so that it's authenticated. And we expect by, um, June to have a full written report, which we'll be sharing with the school committee at that point in time.
Any questions on that? My only question is if they're finding things that are, like, immediate with implementing them, I'm assuming, or if we can.
The new sped director's been great, so, and, and the whole team, especially now we have the high school as well, so...
It's not like we're waiting till June to, if something comes up that, why are we gonna do?
You're gonna hear from these guys in a minute about a lot of the stuff that we've already, that this report will also shine a light on, that they've already figured out they wanna do next.
Sounds good, thank you. Next item is the bridge program. So, Mr. Damaris, and maybe you could introduce, uh, the gentleman coming up, so we all...
I have with me tonight, Mr. Gerald Lima, he's a, a special education supervisor for the high school, and we're happy to have him back at Derfi. You have, you have the information, uh, part of the information that we provided to you was you, at the last meeting, requested some data on the bridge this year so far, and we've provided you with some information regarding absenteeism, um, daily attendance, failure rates, and suspensions. And then it's broken out, um, in terms of conduct incidents by month and suspensions by month in the bridge. I will say that, you know, the tone in the bridge this year is a little different than last year, and I think that that's just the nature of, of the students that came in and some that exited. So, you know, some of the issues that maybe we were wrestling with last year were not so much this year, not that there aren't any issues, because certainly there are. What I wanna focus on, if, unless you have any questions about the data, um...
Any questions? No, I think it was good, good information, I thank you for that.
Okay, what I wanna focus on is, is our proposal to redesign the bridge, okay? Um, because I think that most of us would agree, uh, that generally speaking, it doesn't necessarily work in an optimal way. And as you can see, we've got four teachers, four paras with 26 students, and that, that's incredible ratios. But are we using our resources to the best of, of what they can be, and are we serving all sped students in, in an equitable way? So what we're proposing is to take, um, two of the teachers, or two teaching positions, and keep them as resource rooms, grade nine-10 and grade 11-12. Those would be resource rooms for the bridge students. As bridge students are in other classrooms, and they dysregulate, or they just can't make it through that period, this would be a home base for them. These teachers would also be providing direct instruction. Those rooms would also have one para each. The other two teachers would be deployed into the subseparate world, okay? Whether they're in ELA math, history, science, we're not really sure yet, so it's gonna be based on, on needs, um, in other subseparate sections. Bridge students would be in those classrooms, okay? They would also be in other subseparate classrooms. We'd be able to take the two other paras and put them in those rooms. What we're trying to do is, is take away, not only the word stigma was used earlier, you know, but the stigma of the bridge, the location of the bridge, that becomes kind of this, lack of a better word, holding tank at times, okay? Where the kids blow out of class, and they, and they hang around in this large, open space. I wanna take that away, and I wanna spread it, spread it out, okay? The counselor that's embedded into that, the adjustment counselor, um, he's, he's managing more behavior and dealing with, almost as a pseudo-conduct administrator, rather than what he needs to be doing in terms of meeting the social-emotional needs of the students, doing, you know, some therapy, doing the one-on-one counseling, that, that's part of the IEP. Not that he's not doing it, but a lot of time gets drawn away, and it's confusing for the kids, are you, are you here to help me, or are you, are you here handing out some conduct, uh, discipline? We, if we move, if we take that space away, and we, and we put the two rooms in strategic places, and have the adjustment counselor in an area that, that's nearby, it's gonna give the students in the bridge access to the, to the greater curriculum, it's gonna give them access to better instruction. It's gonna give them, um, access to peer role models that are exhibiting good behavior. Because when we, what I see is when we put all of the, the behavioral issues in one place, it just breeds more behavioral issues. So, what we're proposing i- is, is just that. On top of that, what we're proposing is that we're looking at the current bridge students. And we're looking at students that are a year and a half behind or more, along with conduct issues, and those would potentially become the RPA referrals at the end of this year, as we do the, you know, the IEP meetings to, to close out the year. You know, that's not the only way that a referral would happen, right? Because when, when the bad behavior bubbles up, and we just can't get the pr- the traction with the student to turn them around, that's when, that's when a referral would be during the school year. What I've noticed in the bridge is that there are some students that it works for, and they sail right through their four years. There are no conduct issues, they get the social-emotional supports, they graduate. For the students that have the behavioral issues that we can't make progress with, they're also not making academic progress. They're smart, they can do the work, but they're not, the suspensions are through the roof on these kids, and time in class is not where it should be, because they're blowing out of class. So we find that they get to be juniors in age, but freshmen in credit. And then that becomes an even, uh, bigger task to manage, because these kids, that they come on a regular basis, but they're not gaining success academically. Um, so there has to be kind of this benchmark, that if you're at this point, and you're a year and a half behind, we need to put you in a setting that maybe you can find some success, because these kids do have the intellect, the competency-based approach, and what they can do with, with the students, um, in terms of ingenuity, uh, I think would serve both places better.
Yeah, just, just one quick one, I'm not gonna belabor the point, 'cause I think in about 20 minutes, we're not gonna be able to see half the people in the audience. You mentioned the students that are a year and a half or two years behind will become the referrals for RPA. Is that, is that a sort of a lens that the high school uses to look through in terms of referral, or?
Well, we, in, in terms of the whole referral process to RPA, what, regular ed, special ed, if, if you're a year and a half behind in credits, then that, that's a tough catch-up at Derfi.
Right, so that's sort of the breaking point for...
Right, a year you stay back.
Could it be done earlier, or do you think at that point, it would sort of jump in the gun if you were by sending them sooner? sort of jump in the gun if you were by sending them sooner? Or do you think that a year and a half is sufficient? I'm just thinking a year and a half, two years, that's a, that's a big hole to dig out of when they get sent down to RPA.
It is, um. I think it would depend on, on the student, it would depend on, did they already stay back at a lower grade level? You know, so they may come in, they may come in overaged already, um, as, as a freshman. So, a year and a half, two years is probably pushing it a little too far.
Yeah, I just get that sense that when I heard, and I wrote it down, 'cause I'm like, I'm not gonna interrupt, I'm just wait, but it just seems like an awful long time to wait to make that referral, to then have that student sort of dig out of that hole while they're down at the RPA. But I mean, I understand not jumping the gun too soon after a year, it's gotta be a balance, I guess, if you will.
Has to be a balance, and then in terms of.
Because if they, you said if they were a year behind, that's maybe they may, they may be a repeater. And so sending them there may not be the best option just yet. But I think a year and a half, two years. Well, like you said, multiple, multiple, um, repeating in multiple grades throughout their, their educational history with us, or wherever they came from, maybe an indicated issues as well.
One of the things, um, that's important to note would be, uh, students that we find that are a year and a half to behind, unfortunately disproportionate in, in, in students with IEPs. And then if we use an earlier benchmark to send them, we are referring a disproportionate number of special ed students to, to RPA, and then we probably have some civil rights issues at that point, so.
But maybe talk about how you have quarterly meetings, your staff with RPA staff. We have a written protocol on how we refer students back and forth to those schools.
So, absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I know we've discussed that here, and I think that's great that there's communication going on, ongoing about when it's appropriate to make the referral and, and so that, that information is being shared, so, I, I mean, I think that's great. I just, and, and I didn't realize that point in terms of special ed students and the disproportionate number of, 'cause that would cause problems. Because then they'd say we're targeting, targeting special ed students to send them to the RPA, but I was just looking at it being a balance of when is it too soon and when is it too late? And can we be somewhere in that middle, and if it's a year and a half or two, that's fine. But it just, to me, when I'm sitting here listening to it, it just seemed like that's an awful lot of catch-up work that's being done once that stool gets down to, to RPA. Thank you, are you?
I, I just had a question, I know we had a conversation earlier about the number of spread transfers, but this goes into effect next year?
This is what we would like to institute for next year, yes.
So the kids you have in bridge right now, you're gonna ride with till the end of the year, most of them?
Uh, we have seven seniors that are on target to graduate, and we've, it looks like in terms of who's in favor of a public right now, we have six students coming in, so the number's gonna be approximately the same barring anybody pushing into the district.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How many did we used to have in the bridge four years ago?
Forty.
So we're down to twenty-six. So next year we're on twenty-five, which we should be able, in this model, which I support, we should be able to have a much better, um, experience, because I agree that, you know, you and I have visited the bridge a million times. And I know, I think you came with me that one day when we were up here as well, that, the, the way we're set up, despite the work we did to try to build, we put these kids together, it lacks a real good instructional focus in the behaviors, to get behaviors on top of behaviors to see who can have the most behaviors without the positive role model, peer, partner piece. So I think their design, and they work with, uh, Mike Loesch on SNOS, he's given them some great, uh, uh, recommendations as well. Uh, I think this is a really good opportunity for us to try something new, especially that we got much better communication and programming offerings now at RPA between the two buildings as well. So that whole, you know, it's, that, that whole handoff piece is happening, I think, more smoothly with the process. Uh, and, you know, we get down the road that we actually have another option. You know, that, that, I think that we, we're gonna have really solid models in place rather than just one model, which is the problem with the bridge. The bridge was never established to meet the needs of all kids who display those behaviors. The bridge was originally to be essentially a step down of what Stone was, but we've, we've, it's become a catch-all for both EI behavioral kids and EI kids that need additional supports and hugs rather than, you know, the, the other side.
Can you show us that hug again?
See that, see the way those biceps move? Uh, so, so I think, I, I, I'm really excited about what we got going on, I know, so it's, but this is also a lack of a pun, a bridge to the new building. Because in the new building, this space that we're talking about, it's designed like what they're gonna be doing next year at, at Durfy.
We also identified, uh, the kids coming up from the middle school, from the behavior classrooms, from all the middle schools. There's six students according to, um, this specialized supervisor that we met with, so even capacity moving forward, um, if they're coming in, they still have the support with the freshman academy, and they're also getting an additional resource with the adjustment counselor. So they're actually getting more resources for the social-emotional piece, in particular for the freshman and sophomore years. And then, you know, I think the plan is to, to really give them the supports, front-load them in freshman sophomore year, and then hopefully they build the skills upon that to be more successful in the sub-separate areas, uh, and be more inclusion, inclusive within the school, the scope of Durfy High School, as opposed to being like in the little pocket of a little program. Because what we find is students that come into the program, um, they're all kind of podged together with all these different behaviors. You have some kids that have, uh, traumatic i- issues, and then you have students that trigger the issue. So you have all this dichotomies going, going around in the, into, in the programs where if they are filtered among the sub-separate, and then we get strategic on the teachers in the sub-separate who have the baby behavior management skills and techniques to work with those kids, the behaviors theoretically would subside, because not all in one classroom, and they're easier to manage, um, if we can spread them out. And they get a better high school experience as a Durfy High School student.
So, a question on the sub, the first line about, we'll teach general, sub-separate classes. You just referred to, the kids would go to the sub-separate classes. When we asked at the last meeting, and I know you weren't even hired at that time or whatever, but maybe you can tell us. We were asking, I was asking personally, where's the sub-separate at Durfy, at Durfy, and we were told it was the bridge. So, is it now, are the, is there gonna be additional sub-separate classrooms created that never existed? Or have they always existed where these kids are gonna push into or whatever?
Both, right, so I'm, I'm gonna gain two teachers to be in the sub-separate world, okay? They'll be able to service other sub-separate students. That may actually give me the ability to deploy some other staff to support more inclusive, uh, work, you know, where right now, we're not providing any direct support in the inclusion world in terms of students with IEPs that are also sitting in science and history classes. There's sub-separate history classes, but there are no inclusion histories or science classes. So there's a potential here for us to provide some support there as well.
So it's, they don't have necessarily the home base, sub-separate behavioral types that were there years ago? That was a, maybe I'm mixing the two things up. Do we not have any sub-separate behavioral?
I think in the middle schools, there's sub-separate classroom behavior classes, they're in one class all day long. At Durfy High School, they'll go to a math class, a science class with different teachers, but they're just smaller class size, twelve or less, and one special ed teacher. Uh, where the middle schools, they're, they're in one class all day long, which is much different. And that's something I think some of the work in the future is really getting with the eighth graders and how they transition up, because they are transitioning from class to class at the high school. They're in smaller classrooms, um, 'cause they need more support, but they're, they're not sitting in that one classroom all day long.
And years ago, we used to have at Durfy High School a similar model to the middle school? Is that accurate?
And as the numbers grew, the bridge became what it is, and it's really, they do transition, but they transition between four teachers that are in one spot rather than, you know.
Yeah, but there was a time, ten years ago, let's say, where there was a classroom that the kids, very similar to the middle school.
Going back maybe a little more than ten, but yeah, we just.
So I, I think, uh, I like this, I've been advocating for a long time that we need to fix the bridge or something. I think this is good work to analyze, to try different things, and I think it's gonna work. Do you need any budgetary stuff that, during the budget, we talked about, is there, is there bridge stuff in here? And is this kind of cost neutral, is that basically what I'm seeing?
You raised that in your presentation, finance, those positions, right?
These positions are, these are new positions.
No, no. Wasn't there in your proposal, position for the bridge?
No, that's for the autistic kids, we have nine autistic kids.
That's what it was, I'm sorry, confused, okay.
And the school adjustment council, you mentioned, in addition, is that just a, a resource reallocation, or is that a new position?
He's, he's there. He's there now, he oversees the bridge program with the twenty-five students there, with the four teachers. But if, if you look at a bigger scale, he'll be part of, let's say, the freshman academy, sophomore. He'll be another resource for all grade levels based upon the students that are out of the bridge. Instead of dealing with just twenty-five kids, in theory, he could actually take on more work and really do the job he's supposed to be doing, and that's really, uh, dealing with the behaviors and the interventions as opposed to being reactionary now in the bridge world where all the behaviors.
Because he has to be there as sort of a.
He's the quasi-administrator and then adjustment counselor.
That's my other question, and we've talked about it before, of whether there's a need for a person to be, one person to be in charge of that, to manage the bridge. And I think we talked about it last time, it was each house, or whatever, however, they do their own thing, so if the four of us are the VPs, I might do my own thing, he's doing it if the kid's at his grade level. Is there any thought to trying to either fix that or correct it, or do you need another staff person to?
I think based on the numbers we have right now, and if, and if we do this and it, and it works, I, I don't think we do. I, I think that, um, in terms of having Mr. Lima on staff now, he could probably serve in that role as the intermediary between what's going on in the classroom and, and even to work with a grade office. And I think with, with that adjustment counselor as that point person, he can, he can work with each grade level. He knows the students, he knows the behaviors, if there's any behavior intervention plans, he can kind of have that conversation with the grade office VPs and really have those conversations across ninth and twelfth grade. The old model would suggest that you would need an administrator and adjustment counselor in that little program. Where now you got eleven, eleven staff, tons of resources for twenty to thirty kids, which is not efficient. And I think this model really can, uh, benefit more students and, um, it's, it's a, for the greater good of the school. The other, the other thing it's going to do too is really the mindset of having these kids embedded in Durfy High School. And then you talked about the sub-separate classroom, the next layer is really having discussions about those kids making the transition into the inclusion, general ed population, because really, our job as professionals to really get these students in a place to be successful once they leave Durfy High School. So that's kind of the transition from ninth to twelfth, and really the special ed and how the services are really front-loaded, and hopefully with the supports as they get older and in seniors and they're passing MCAS, that the supports kind of get pulled back and they get more encouragement, more confidence, and they can be more successful and independent.
Quick points, not this year, but down the road, there may be another type of position in lieu of the straight SAC, but it's much more of a clinical coordinator role. Uh, but, but not suggesting that we're gonna be coming back to add more administrators, be kind of growing the current SAC model, but that's not this coming year. Two, I wish they were here, 'cause it's part of the equation, but look at the success we've had at Stone High School growth. What are we up to, over sixty kids now at Stone? Which is impressive, so you wonder, like, where are the, the other, you know, we had forty kids a couple of years ago. The high school at Stone, you've been up there several times. It's growing, and thank God we, committee made the decision to allow that to happen because that also really helps meet the needs of kids that could not be successful, uh, in the bridge. Uh, and those kids were getting sent there and, and not, uh, being able to be productive there. So the Stone model, I think, has, has been a huge benefit to us.
So were the sixties high school students at Stone?
No, sixty total.
We used to have thirty, like thirty-three kids at Stone, Stone was sixty kids.
I didn't think there was sixty, but no. The, um, the only other question I had, and you touched on it, was about the one and a half years to, to move those students to RPA potential. So do you have the capacity for that, or do you need to have that position that we just had? And I'm not looking to go back and have that same conversation. What I'm saying, so we have to, if it's not filled, you gotta fill it, like, you gotta be ready to roll and.
Did you fill it?
It's filled, it's filled.
Beginning of April.
Okay. Yes. So we have the capacity if they need to send students.
They don't wanna go back down the other road, but you're saying he's gonna have them? And the person's not working in that capacity right now, is what we heard, but hopefully he'll be ready, because you, do you have any vacancies?
Yes.
You gotta fill all your vacancies, would be the message, right? You have a special education vacancy?
I'm, I'm sorry, not special education. You said vacancies, right?
So, my concern is, we gotta be, if they're gonna send kids, they gotta be, if you need to be fully staffed and we need to support you more, then I would say let's.
Right now, we are fully staffed, especially.
My last point was, another good point that you made, is the science and history not having support in those kids. And that's been a bone of contention of mine for a long time at the high school. And I'm not so sure that everyone, uh, is aware of that, uh, need. I think I read a report from some consultant that looked at, um, our needs here in the city, in the district, and one of them was, I think, it's that pointed issue, that we don't have enough special education support in the rooms for the kids that need it. So with that said, is there ever, or has there ever been a request from the high school to say, now that we do have budgets with more revenue, to increase the numbers, and what would that look like if? You don't have to say it now, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but it's clearly a need, I think universally we would agree. When we have a little bit of money that we can actually spend, now is the time to maybe do some of those things, we'd be, I'm speaking for myself now. It's to, that's a need, so.
I'll answer it this way, um, I'm very interested to see what the Walker audit is go, is gonna tell us and, and what their recommendation's gonna be. When we had the opportunity to interview with them, I, it was one-on-one with me, and they, I said, I really want some, I want you to take a critical look at, at the inclusion world, and is it working? I've got co-teaching in math in, in ELA in freshman and sophomore year, and then I've got, um, some of it in, in junior and senior year, but not in history, not in science. So I wanted them to take a look at why we have so many sub-separate classrooms and what would their recommendations be to maximize our resources, to benefit all kids.
And nothing prevents us from doing the co-teaching, it's the, it's the relationship, I mean, the teachers, 'cause we got this approved. Did we get it, we got it in the contract, right? At the last contract negotiation, co-teaching? We did. Yeah, but we did get it approved because we, this was the model that we started with Fonska. If two teachers wanted to try that in social studies.
It's in the MOA.
At Fonska.
It's in the MOA. We could do that, because we already have existing, and so.
But you need the resource, it costs money.
Yes and no, because he has a sub-separate history teacher and he has regular ed history. They could team up and do a co-teaching one.
And just double enrollment.
To move to full inclusion.
Yeah, because they only, probably only has like six or seven kids in the sub-separate class.
But wouldn't that pose a problem for an IEP?
It would, so there's another layer, there's another layer of this conversation, like, so with this proposal, if this is something we can enact in September, it, it frees up a couple of resources for us to then move some teachers into that general ed science class to help that support in the special ed world, where we don't have it now. We have it in the sub-separate world, but we don't have it in the inclusion world, in science right now. Um, and if we, if we look at it another year later, and then we really identify the kids in the sub-separate and really make the distinguish in the team meetings, that he could be, or he or she could be successful in the inclusion model, then what, what that does, it reduces the number of, of sub-separate classrooms, freeing up teachers to then co-teach in science and then history. So if we tier this out into two or three years, we could essentially, if we go with this model, have co-teaching across the board in all content. Based upon, now, we have team meetings, we have a lot of people that may say, parents may say, I want my, my son or daughter in the smallest setting, but if the numbers or the data suggests that they're not making progress in those sub-separate classrooms, and the data supports the co-teaching, then it's, it's an easier conversation to have in those meetings to then push those IEPs into inclusion. And IDEA says, states that we should be all-inclusive anyway, so I think we should be moving in that direction in, in the long term. But short term, this particular model will help support science in the general ed classrooms next year with special ed kids, uh, in the inclusion model. Not great, but it'll, it'll, it'll give some support where, uh, we can have a presence in special ed in science and in the inclusion. And we'll identify, really, um, if we do.
And we'll identify, really, if we do this model, we kind of did a mock schedule already. And then we can probably provide in the sophomore classes, we'll be doing the MCAS. So that's where the supports will be because it's a testing year. So it's strategic, but it's also the best practice, I think, for the kids.
If we have a student in grade eight, they have four major subjects, they have support on all four.
In the high school?
No, in the eighth grade. So the student's coming up. So they have...
I don't know how the middle schools, the self-contained...
No, just regular, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I don't know how the middle schools operate as far as... But we have co-teaching in ELA and math currently right now at the high school.
And the only reason why I ask that is if you need co-teaching in English and math based on your needs, it's hard for me to believe that you don't need it in science and history.
Totally agree with you.
So I think that's just something we need to really look at. And is it gonna be costly? Certainly is. But if the needs are there, why not, you know, kind of do it? So I think it's good discussion. Any other comments? Thank you for the information. Welcome back to the district.
Appreciate it.
And with that being said, no other agenda items? Motion to adjourn? So move. Second, all in favor? Thank you all. Have a good night.